All rise for a pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, a one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could the secretary perform a roll call attendance, please? Here.
Here.
Hi, here.
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 Here. Okay. All the members have received the minutes from the secretary from April 18th meeting. Is there any discussion? If not, I'll entertain a motion to accept the minutes.
So move.
Second.
Okay, motion's made second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Our first item on the agenda this evening is a site plan and special use permit for Subaru of Wappinger.
Good evening, my name is Wendy Berger, I'm here for the applicant this evening. We concluded our testimony and I know you have a draft resolution with regard to this application, but I just wanted to add one thing. We had, the engineer had spoken to Barbara Roberti with regard to this project since all the construction is done for the building and maybe in about a month now that exists. She just told us to put on the record again, so everyone has it, that we're gonna ask for a CO so we could start occupying the building as soon as that construction is done and then this is gonna be in addition. We have to relocate, as you know, from up the road a bit and the only thing that's kind of, we're doing the construction now, they're waiting for the showroom furniture, which is still on order, but otherwise, you know, they're gonna be ready to open in a few weeks. So she just wanted that put on the record again, so everyone is clear on that. So that's why I've gotten up, I didn't wanna intrude, but I just wanna make sure so there's no problem with the building permit and the CO.
Yeah, basically, you're, you're gonna reoccupy the building based upon the previous site plan approval or amended site plan approval we had given. Oh, I forgot, Jim, how was that, six months ago? Something like that, yeah. For the facade renovations, I think it was for.
I don't think the last, the last site plan amendment didn't change the building.
No.
Oh, you know what, that's, sorry.
It was all along the front, they were taking out the mounds, they were changing social permits.
That's right, that was more of an architectural review.
Yeah, so the original CO for the building stands.
Right, but she just wanted us to...
Yeah, yeah, I saw Barbara copy me too, so yeah, I don't, that's okay. And then, you know, the building, obviously, the construction on the back is gonna be, once that's completed, then you'll have, you know, a CO separately for the building.
Which is now the current, right, which is what we're currently looking at tonight.
Right, correct.
And the only reason we came and pushed it actually before we occupied is it takes so long for materials that we're trying to move it up so that we could at least order the materials, to be honest.
Okay, alright. So reopening wouldn't be an issue. So back to the resolution of approval. And obviously, there was no objections to what was put into the resolution? Okay, but we do have one amendment that we need to address.
Yes, the engineer had pointed out minor changes that needed to be made to the project description, small changes, square footage, parking calculations, things that I have recorded based on the initial that changed in the subsequent. So I will amend the, at the board's discretion, I will amend the resolution.
So we need to amend the resolution?
Yes.
Okay, so it will be adding an additional, be adding an additional line into section two?
We're changing a few of the square footage numbers in the initial whereas. You know, I mean, it's going, it's 11,049 square feet needs to be changed to 11,075 square feet. Those are the type of changes.
Okay, so it's actually within the resolution itself?
Yeah, it's the first whereas and then it's going to be condition two, where the project description is repeated.
Okay. Alright. Alright, so with all that said, I'll entertain a motion to approve the resolution as amended?
I'll make that second.
Okay, motion's made second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Okay, you're welcome, have a good evening. Okay. Our next item on the agenda this evening is Cooper Road lot line realignment.
Oh, yeah.
Hi. Amy Barber Gary with Dan Secosa for the applicant.
Okay. Evening, you received the copy of the resolution?
I did.
Okay, there's no, no concerns with the resolution as written?
No, that's fine.
Okay. I guess everything, do you wanna touch on today's letter? You think everything's good?
Pretty much, yeah. We got your response letter today. The easements, we'll need to see the actual descriptions.
Yeah, yeah, that went to the surveyor last week, so.
And then the question we had about where the excess material that you're cutting from the site, you didn't provide a response for that, do you know where?
So, there's a possibility that we're gonna have to mix the soil for the fill pad, for the septic system, so we may be able to use some. I'm waiting to deal with the...
Okay, so that, that's still to be determined?
To be determined, yeah.
Okay. So if there's nothing that needs to be addressed, then with the resolution, I will entertain a motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
Okay, motion's made second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. Okay. Okay, next item on the agenda this evening is discussion regarding Berto subdivision.
Really crowded. So officially, it's Bortaro.
Yes, Bortaro, I realized that after I had said it.
It's okay, I made a mistake.
Yes, I did.
So, this project has been before you in the past. This is a two-lot subdivision. We have been screwing around a little bit with health department, the wetlands located, things such as that. So, the, we had to mess around with the septic effectively. This is a kind of strangely configured lot, we have an existing home in the rear. The idea is to do a two-lot subdivision and provide for an area for a new home on what is proposed as lot number one. Since we've been here, we also have had a meeting in the field because access or site distance and access coming out onto Stony Hill was a concern. So we met with the highway superintendent out there, I also met with John out there sometime ago. As you come out of the project looking to the left, now there's an existing driveway there, but it's not great in terms of site distance. When you come out of the project looking to the left, there's a bit of a vertical restriction. So, we're proposing on kind of working that down, that shoulder down a little to get that site distance to that location. I think that was, the highway superintendent was okay, John's letter indicated too, let's get some hard numbers on there in terms of site distance that way, it's a record. So, effectively, that's where we've been and, you know, again, it's fairly straightforward, two-lot subdivision, but it's got about everything involved, wetlands and new site and health department and all that other stuff, so that's the fix and assets.
Okay. Well, I guess, you know, there was the two recent letters, I guess, that have been put together. One, obviously, the planner, I guess there's a couple of comments here that probably should get addressed. I'll let him go through those with you real quick.
So the first one is the shared driveway, I think everything checks out. You will need, you know, maintenance and access easements to be, you know, at the discretion of the engineer and the attorney. I know that initially, it had been raised, you know, the question of the shared driveway towards the back where it sort of cuts across lot one. You know, personally, I don't see it as a major issue. It's relatively far away from where you're showing, you know, the potential build out for the house on lot one.
Right.
But it will complicate that easement a little bit. And we were curious about, about that and how that sort of influences the shape of lot one, whether or not you would consider altering the shape of lot one to prevent that from happening. But, you know, that's ultimately up to you. I wouldn't, wouldn't want you to modify an existing driveway unnecessarily and create unnecessary disturbance and cost, but I'll let John speak to that more when, when we go over his letter. Second question that I had, you label the area of disturbance, the approximate area of disturbance is .75 acres. And that label points to lot one, but there is an area of disturbance on lot two and I just wanted to double check whether or not that area of disturbance was combined or if that area of disturbance was just on lot one, in which case, we're curious what the area of disturbance on lot two would be in terms of size?
Yeah, we'll clarify and make sure it represents everything.
Perfect. You already talked about site distance, I just, I just had that in my memo to, you know, sort of give a little bit of history on that. The question about the bulk table, the building coverage for lot two is being recorded as being less than 12%, but their requirement is that it's less than 10%. But I think that is a typo, it's probably not an actual issue, but, you know, clarify that. And then a question about the building footprint that's being shown on lot one, it looks like it infringes into the side yard setback. At the end of the day, it's a hypothetical building, but if we're, if we're showing it there to show that it can comply, I would, I would suggest reorienting that building a little bit to have it comply.
Yeah, that should just be kicked back ahead.
Or rotated, or, you know, I mean, however you wanna to modify it. John had mentioned the questions about the scaling and whether or not those setbacks were being shown accurately, but I'll let, I'll let John talk about that. John, what's in your letter?
Well, why don't we just start right there? At least the plan that we received, it didn't look like the setbacks were shown at the correct distance, so that, that comment about the house footprint crossing it may or may not apply once, just check those, make sure.
I guess I gotta point you all, we're talking about that.
Yeah.
Would you guys, would you consider this front? I know obviously clearly that sign is signed.
That one right there probably would qualify as, as front. But I was looking more at the sides and the rears, it, I don't know. It could be that our plan wasn't plotted out at the right scale, but it just, it looked off. So, I would just check that. And then, this is the first time I looked at this, so we talked about it preview, or before the meeting about shifting the existing driveway over into the flat portion of lot two. Again, we understand there's a cost involved with that, but it, it would eliminate a lot of encumbrance on the proposed lot if you were to do it. So it's just, it's just more something to consider as a...
While we figure that out right now.
Sure.
So, as the existing driveway comes, one is in this direction here, and then to turn it, this is the house. This is the flat lot, right portion, whole portion of the house, we're talking about this right here. So, I know we talked, this gets a little tight with the property going here, that was gonna go by, but what should take, when you provide an easement for this, to kind of for lot two or lot one, or we take this and wrap it around and keep it within the shared portion of the driveway? It's up to you. Whatever works. So it sounds to me like, I mean, this is not a head and brain issue here either, we're not knocking down ten foot, you know, so forth and so forth, so why don't we just try to keep it within that area? And that'll, that'll take that portion away from it.
What's the, what's the size on lot one? What's the acreage?
One is, is, 10,100 square feet.
Okay, and it's all included, so.
Uh, to me, it just makes it a cleaner, you know, once it's all said and done, then...
I mean, so you've got a little bit of flexibility as far as the property part, too, so.
Yeah, it does get a little tight up in the interior, deeper minimum, but some of that kind of stuff. And one of the things, like, are you gonna do ninety degrees here, fire, park access, just kind of sweep through?
Right, yeah. And then, getting back to the site distance thing, yeah, we met out there and you mentioned in your response letter that Mike agreed to do the work, to do the clearing work, is that right?
He met directly with Mike in the field, so I'll...
Okay, if that's the case, I just, we need to, you know, and I can ask him directly, but we'd like to have something from him in writing to that effect, so that we know it's on him to get that done, so.
Alright, I mean, you understand how hard, how easy it is to get letters from highway superintendent.
Mike's pretty good.
We're dealing with another municipality.
He doesn't, he doesn't write himself in those.
I mean, those were the main issues for me, most of the other comments were really just house.
I guess if you share that though on the plans, so we can have an idea of, you know, showing the plans where the clearing needs to take place.
Yeah.
And then, is there anything, any drainage in there, or is there a swell or anything, or any culverts?
Just, just a sheet fluff?
It's pretty flat, right?
I did a question for you, just 'cause, I mean, like John, this is the first time I'm reviewing these plans. But you've mentioned wetlands in the rear, I took a look at them, I mean, everything looks well outside the buffer, so I'm not concerned about that, but I was curious. I didn't see, you know, short EAF or anything like that submitted. Was that submitted with the original? Okay.
Yeah, this was, that would've been submitted with the original.
Okay.
So, yeah. We have to show an expansion septic area for the back lot because the existing house doesn't have a septic. We're not planning on doing anything back here, but that's, we have to locate. Both of the motions, get the wetland located and all that even, even though that's the case.
Is there anything that you could submit that you got, you know, when you were having those wetlands flagged? I mean, I was just curious about the extent of that work, of what was done.
Yeah, we'll get you on it, we didn't make this one, but we have the sign off. Perfect.
Yes, yeah, I just wanna make sure.
Any, any board members have any questions regarding this application? Okay. So I guess at this point, it really comes down to, I mean, you obviously have some corrections to make here.
Right, you know what, I mean, the idea of tap dance tonight is to see if we could schedule a hearing for it, we've never had one.
Yeah, public hearing.
Right, but I wouldn't do it, I don't know what the, what's the timeframe? Just to get a revised printed and all that, I'd say, where are we at, May 1st, beginning of May?
Yeah.
Beginning of June, I don't, wouldn't hit them second meeting in May, I would say June.
Well, we have a May 16th, we have June 6th.
Yeah, I would say, just to give every, you know, and maybe we have our health department at hand, you know, June 6th would probably be a better option.
Okay, so June 6th? Alright, so I'm gonna make some motion to set a public hearing for June the 6th for this project?
So moved.
Okay, motion's made second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries.
Right, thank you very much.
So June 6th, just touch base with secretary, 'cause we're gonna, you're gonna need to put a sign on the property.
Yeah, yeah, that's the new trend, yeah, okay. Good, thank you very much.
Okay, you're welcome.
So, Mike, just on that, the question you raised as far as the, is that a side or is that a front? Show both. 'Cause where it's located, it may actually be a side. 'Cause the front is defined as between the building and the street, but part of that is to the side of the building, so it may well be a side.
You know, I think we can make it work either way, and usually, front's more restrictive, 50 or 40 again.
So I just, definitely, I don't want you to have to move it out, or go get a variance, you know.
No.
So, yeah, don't build it in front of that line.
Yeah.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
Maybe the other option is not to make it, show up the property standard, you know.
You have to have minimum, you have to, the pole has a minimum width though, right? I mean, I think that's what they're, yeah, I think that's what they're trying to work their way around.
Well, I mean, they look at it, and the driveway's gotta do a little differently, like, incorporate that into the bottom.
Alright, next item on the agenda is a conceptual review of Wappinger Auto Tech.
Ah, good evening, tonight, I have Phil Gallia, who's here, who is the tenant in the existing property. The town has been scratching at its door for a while to make it appear before the board. We are here relative to a conceptual. There's not a lot of heavy detail here, but I think at least explains the point, so maybe we can move and get some questions answered and move in the right direction. So, everybody familiar with Wappinger's Auto Tech, which is...
Yeah, he's, yeah, Phil's been in front of, well, not all of us, but he's been in front of some of us before. We had some pretty lengthy discussion, I guess, regarding some of the site issues there that needed to get addressed.
So, the, as you know, the existing building is right up against Route 9. To the right, looking at the site from nine, there is areas that he's currently using for parking, for vehicles to be worked on and so forth. In the left rear, there is an area where there's small vehicle, small motor repair, which is different than large motor vehicle repair. So we're gonna have to try and work through that issue. One of the benefits that we have here is that the owner of this property is also the owner looking at the property to the parcel to the right. So, we have some flexibility on some lot lines and so forth to try and at least contain the work that Phil's going on his site relative to that specific site. So what we do show here, this is the existing building here, nine. There's an existing, I believe, residential residence in the front here, and then the body shaft that's existing back. The idea, here is where all the parking's occurring, the vehicles are working on it. The idea is to take the lot line over, turn it around for, you know, the area that he's, they were putting vehicles on behind this property. I know and I understand that it's been a sermon relative to aesthetics, where it looks outside, it gets very crowded. There isn't a whole new sign of its core location, it's like some landscape and that location additionally to the front of the building as well. As these plans were called, additionally, there's not a lot on the board, I can tell you that. But I think the biggest issue related to this is again, the small vehicle repair, everything is stored in that back corner here, and the code based upon the zone that we're in, it's not abundantly, I don't believe allowed for the zone. So it's an integral part of this business, we'd like to currently maintain that use and that type of repair work. So we are certainly not making steps to the formal application to, but there may be some variances, there may be some pitter-pattering with the town board relative to the use, so that's, that's what we're here out. Barbara's certainly got her head around it quite a bit, so unfortunately, it's not for tonight, but...
What would we actually need a variance for?
Yeah, that's, yeah, why, what do you need a variance?
My understanding is that small, small engine repair use is not a, it's not a use that's permitted within this lot.
But automotive is.
Yes, you said that it's not co-assigning with automotive repair.
Okay.
Right, and there are two distinct different uses within the code.
We can issue a variance for that.
No, no, it's not a, it's a zoning issue. Yeah, if it's not allowed in the zone. Alright, so I mean, so that's one thing that you have to get worked out, but that's, that's outside of our scope.
Well, that's true.
Yeah.
Right.
But the storage of all the small equipment, I guess that's, you know, assuming you get approval for this use, then how is it all gonna be stored? 'Cause right now, I know at the last meeting, I believe, there was a lot of discussion about, you know, display versus equipment that's being, you know, stored for, for repair. Is that area that there were, the items that are gonna be repaired, is that gonna be in a, in a screened area from Route 9, or...
I was also thinking about putting a fence along the, if you're looking at the building on the left-hand side, and then going all the way back, so all the repaired stuff would be behind the fence. And then, if we could get a little display up front, like in front of the building against the glass windows, impossible by the sign, we could designate an area for that, so we can put some stuff out there for the display.
Okay, I mean, yeah, that, I mean, it makes sense. And you just have to kinda, you know, lay it out for us, Bill, show us how you, how you're planning on, you know, the locations of where you're looking to put stuff, sizes of the display areas.
Yeah, I know the property line goes kind of across to the other parking lot here. So our sign, if we went there, and we have a grass area here that we can clean up, you know, put some, you know, decorate it a little bit, and, you know, put a small display here. The fence would come up, go from the building and go straight back. And same thing, if you're looking at the building to the right, if we get the property line realigned, we have that grass area out front with like the fence that in, so any of the disabled vehicles and stuff like that would kind of go up behind the fence and it gives it more of a nicer appearance, front or not.
Okay. The only question would be is, Barbara's not here to see, but setbacks for the storage areas, that has to be maintained?
I wanna double check that, but...
We'd have to, you know, we'd have to check, you know, Barbara, the zoning administrator, to make sure, see what those distances are before you put that together on paper.
Yeah, that's the point. Yeah, and I think the overall attempt here is it's just, you know,
Right. Yeah.
And it's great to go over the news, but, 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 but.
Are you parking cars in the back of that property? 'Cause it looks like it's deeper than what you're using.
Here?
Yeah, all the way back. The way the property comes, like, that's why I wanna move the lot line over, because the lot line as of right now is in the middle of the parking lot. So it only gives us like three or four spots to the right of the building. And, so if we moved it over, it kind of tapers. There's a, I guess here, there's some type of, what do you consider like a drainage ditch that comes from Adams? In the back?
I know along the left-hand side property, there is a drainage ditch, from going that line, as the letter it cuts back in.
It goes somewhere up in here to the woods, I don't know, you know, as far as to what you can possibly fit back there. Because this, this lot, it was right behind the building.
Be useful to show us, you know, where the, where that tree line is and whether or not there's, there's wetlands, right, 'cause if there's a drainage ditch heading back into there, there may be a wetland area back there that might have a buffer that might restrict that.
I know, I think it's by Adams.
There's a, there's a retention direct... There's a, there's a retention, um, directly.
Yeah. Okay. It's, it's pretty far back though.
Yeah, but.
So retention basin.
That's not on their property though, right? No, it's on Adams.
That's on, right, that's for Adams, right? For their stormwater?
I mean, I think that's where they did the back mitigation.
They've got quite a bit of area behind the building too.
Well, the other thing too is it looks like the, um, what's that, the water source, what's the building?
Yes, the water source has some of their parking lot on, on that property.
I was gonna say, yeah.
That's the property to the left.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we lose some of that, 'cause I guess the drainage ditch goes there, and then the water source actually has some of that property paid.
There's also a, in the front of this building, there's a, there's a water line eastbound, um, which now obtained, um, CPL can get it to you, um, goes through the parking lot. And we ran, when we ran, uh, when we did the, uh, the loop to the corner, it ran, um, through the front of this property and then, um, that may show, um, if you can pull it up, John lasted Detroit.
Yeah.
That may show what the drainage, 'cause we had, um, you know, we ran, there's a water line running through there, so if there's, it crosses, and I know, I recall years ago looking at that, and there was one question regarding where the DOT right-of-way ended, um, because this was a portion, this building is pretty old, and I think it, I think this, 'cause what happened was Route Nine made a couple of turns over and back, and this building, I think this building predates the sixty-eight, well, probably was when they, they expanded Route Nine.
Yeah, the, the front yard setback is definitely a lot smaller than is required for the zone.
Yeah, well, that's 'cause it was a DOT taken.
Yeah.
Um, and, of course, it'll access, let's see.
Leaves them even less room in the front to, to store anything, which, if you're storing anything in the front, it's right up on the road, right? You've got, you've got like twenty-seven feet between the building and the road.
There's not, there's not many trees.
Yeah. Could we get the, I guess, the existing, you know, pavement around the building, just to, just to understand what is, what is there, you know, what the, what the circulation is like, what, what space you've got to work with?
Yeah, so, okay, this is good shot, just above, so, um, we got to get it on the copy, you know, about having discussion, we're gonna get, the explanation is pretty clear, the front of the lot, when it shows up, that's a wall, the drainage is not there. This, this does reflect an actual survey on the subject piece, we've gotta give more detail from Joe on it, a whole, we'll pick up that at the parking, you know, kind of run that.
The, uh, but like I said, the, um, Morris Associates at the time did a lot of work on this, in running the water line, 'cause they know, because it's issued to Mr. Popkin when he did it.
Was it? Not yet.
Not at all. So.
Well, you mentioned, funny thing, but I'll talk about tomorrow.
So, but, uh, touch base with, uh, with CPL, there's, um.
I'll get it over to you, Mike.
Yeah, 'cause they, it, and then there's, I know there's DOT drainage structures in there, that, that drainage ditch may be a DOT, um, you know, so we did a lot of work on this site and the site next door.
Okay, so let's, we'll get the heavy detail on there that's needed, um, but I have.
And I, that should also, I think, show the page.
I'm, I'm, yeah. That's, that'd be great, but I've, we've gotta get an update of the show, if it's there, I guess, I, um, we'll do that, but I think what we need is we also need some reliable variances, we think we're gonna need, I think you'll probably come back and do that formal application for referral to the zone, really.
Yes.
So, you certainly, you know, tell us in the guidance, and it's a question that has to be asked, but the idea is.
I think when Barbara and I looked at this years ago, I actually think there's a site plan approval for the lot next door for a building that was removed, but I don't ever remember seeing any site plan approvals for this lot.
Well, there was a place on there, everybody went around, called Players?
Mm-hmm.
I don't know.
What was it?
That's right.
Right?
Was the Bluebird before that?
What, the little barn that was there?
Who?
Wasn't that the Bluebird before that?
The Bluebird, I've heard that.
Yeah.
Back in the sixties.
Is that rafters?
Get in there.
Yeah, rafters, I've heard, that's, yeah.
Wasn't it the old?
That was before my time.
Old post and rafters, yeah.
Yes, yeah.
That building was, I mean, literally, on Route Nine.
Used to be at that, that spot that they tore down.
Well, at the time, they damaged that building, and, 'cause it's, I'm gonna say it, took it down around two thousand four, two thousand three, it's not right.
The way you're showing the, the lot line adjustment, this, would that then be right on the, the driveway for the building in the back?
It'd be right on that driveway.
That would be a time to take it to that point.
And then it would encompass the, because like there, it goes from blacktop to grass.
Right.
Then incorporate that grass area, and then shoot through the road to go back there.
Make sure you add a bulk table for Lot Two as well, right? Whatever.
Yeah, I guess, I guess.
Whatever the changes to that side lot setback, and whether or not that would then require a variance, right?
Right, well, I got, that's a good question too, so we, we know, I'm getting to a site plan, and Phil says, a lot many want, um, off second bar, but you see it as well, plans for one on Lot Two.
Let me, make this be a, it might be a, I can't remember, there's, there's something for the oil line shop, I don't know, well, no, variance, I don't know.
For, for, for.
Very limited.
Yeah.
I just didn't want you to notice that.
No.
No, just, you know, the subdivision, right? Subdivision for the lot line realignment, and then site plan for Lot One, but.
Well, this is actually, yeah, a lot, lot line realignment.
Yeah, but that lot line realignment will need a, a bulk table showing that Lot Two is still conforming, or, or would require X, Y, and Z variance.
So from a seeker point of view, lot lines type two, if you're not really doing anything to the site, it's probably type two.
I'd wanna get a better idea of what changes they're actually making. It sounds like the building is staying the same.
Well, the only change, it looks like, is the screening.
Is, yeah, it's the outside, putting up the fence, maybe moving storage stuff outside, it's probably.
So the only issue is if you need any variances, typically, you know, setbacks and things like that, you would not, so, I mean, this is conceivably a type two.
I wanna take a look at the language though, 'cause a lot of that is, you know, code conforming.
Right.
They've got that qualifier in there, and if it's, if they require variances, it might bump that.
Right, well, that's, that, that I think is the only.
The only reason it might bump it, yeah.
And again, it's, it's clearly, if it's anything, it's unlisted.
Yeah, it's existing.
So you could do, you know, variance, if the variance is, uh, under seeker, you have to do something with seeker, you could theoretically just leave that to the CBA, but I think the lot, a lot line adjustment and area variance, yeah, area variance is tip, so an area variance for a single-family residence is not, um, is, is a type two. Setback variances for, uh, commercially properties are normally a type two, let me, let's pull it up.
Yeah, I'm not concerned about the area variance, setbacks, property, and a lot of the presence and stuff, um, which is the, the use issue, the, these variants.
I, I just looked through, I don't see anything about small engine repair in our code.
I saw, I, I looked through it too, I didn't see anything, that's right.
I took a note, I wanted to go back and check for that.
So I don't, I don't.
I've never heard of it.
I think it's just a service business, I mean, it's not, again, we've had, you know, you've been over in the ups, I mean, you've been, and I think Barbara made a determination a rough one on the other, okay.
Can you, can you explain for me, 'cause I, I'm not quite sure what the difference between, you're right, an auto body shop and a small engine repair?
There's nothing, both work on motors.
Yeah, there's no difference.
It's very, it's so similar in nature, that's why I was, I was surprised.
She said it wasn't inconforming with the, with the, you know, I needed a variance for a different business, I didn't understand what that meant, because I'm like, it's the same thing.
Your business is the same as the one I saw.
Same thing.
Well, I mean, so what happened, right, you, you used to be over next to the highway class.
That was, that was a different company, but, yeah.
But same type of.
Same type of business, right.
Same type of business, repairing lawn mower, snowblower.
All kinds of engines, yeah.
Small, you know, small machinery, and then.
Do you work on cars as well, or is it, okay.
Yeah.
So it's just an auto body shop that also does all kinds of?
I don't know about.
It's auto repair.
Yeah, 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 sorry, sorry.
That should all fall under the same umbrella.
Yeah, I don't.
Really should. That's what I was, I didn't, 'cause I didn't see nothing different in the code about small engine repair.
No, there's nothing, I, I didn't see anything in the code, I could have searched.
Yeah, so I mean, I know the bigger, I mean, the last time you were in, the last time, the bigger issues were, that we discussed, were, um, sales display areas.
Yep, and the, and the fence.
Yeah, so you have, yeah, so you have to do that, and, you know, again, the, the stuff that's awaiting repair, um, you know, putting it in a, in a, you know, screened area.
I think the fenced-in yard would make a huge difference on the appearance from Route Nine.
And sales, you know, sales of that equipment is permitted in the HD, HD zone, so, to the extent you, you say, you know, it's an accessory use to the sale.
It's really not, right?
I mean, that would be permitted, I mean, that's, you know.
Yeah, yeah, it's.
Servicing stuff you, you sell is, is it normal accessory use, so?
Yeah, no, no, I agree, I mean, it's just, you know, you know, I, I think, I think they're.
I don't think they're gonna need a use there.
Yeah, yeah.
Again, there's, there's auto vehicle repair, and then there's a motive, I guess, we'll see, and I wish our care, which would.
Yeah, no, I.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna take a look at it, we'll talk to Barbara.
I, I guess that's, I guess that was my biggest concern.
Yeah, yeah.
To the north of the border.
So, so say, you just have to check with Barbara on the clarification of the two, just to make sure.
Yeah, I mean, we can take a look at it, but I think ultimately it's her call, it's, it'll be ultimately her call, it'll be her interpretation, but.
Right, right.
We'll, we'll look into it, we'll talk to her about it.
But if it's a, yeah, if it's just something that's not mentioned in the code, then how do you handle that? Is that something that they have to go back to the town board to?
Well, I mean.
To include as a, an amendment, you know, to the, to the zoning code?
So.
In the future, maybe, but not.
Or would it be, or would it be included by default, because it's not in the code?
Well, I, so again, so the question becomes, you're not, one, if you're selling them at the location, then that's a retail establishment.
Correct, yeah.
Okay, so if you're selling it and servicing it, it's no different than, you know, I, I don't know if, uh, Tractor Supply, or, you know, Adams, or, you know.
Car dealers.
Adams, yeah, that's.
Same as a car dealer.
Right, exactly.
Car dealership.
Yeah.
So, you know, typically, that, you know, repair of, you know, plus, as, you know, you've all noted, I think, auto, an auto repair shop is more intensive use than small engine repair now, 'cause you don't have.
Yeah.
Cars sitting around, or any, you know, you've got any, maybe you have any to get just as far, so.
Yeah.
As far as, uh, you know, it's technically not a motor, I mean, it's not a motor vehicle, I mean.
Right.
If you fix an ATV, then an ATV under the VTL is considered to be a motor vehicle, a snowblower's not, you know, so, it's certainly, it'll localize as a motor vehicle, so, and that, and that's really a function of having a zoning, the zoning administrator would make that determination.
Colonel Barbara's on the ground, I want to.
Yeah.
May I have a discussion?
If you, if you screen the property, and make Barbara happy, what happens?
Yeah, I think it's a good project, and we're gonna walk away, it's gonna be fenced, it's gonna be screened, it's gonna be nice, you're not gonna see anything.
Yeah, yeah, I agree.
The whole small engine thing is, you know, much ado about nothing, really.
I don't have, I don't have a problem helping you get to where you need to be. I don't need any of it. If I can get approval, get a fence, I can get a fence up relatively quick and get that pretty much cleaned up, it's not.
Do you need the lot line realignment before the fence though?
Uh, do we need it on that one corner?
I, what were you?
Yes, on that right side, but I can fence in that left side and get that all cleaned up. I can do the right side after.
Yeah, the left, yeah.
You know what I mean?
Do you have, do you have, do you have a written lease?
Yes.
And does that have the areas spelled out that you're, you leasing the whole lot, or?
Oh, yeah, I'm leasing, I'm not leasing this property with the body shop, I'm leasing.
No, no, I know, but, but did your lease encompass the whole lot, or is it just the building?
No, it's the whole lot.
The whole, okay. So, so then you can certainly do the left-hand side.
Can we give them approval to do that, right?
Well, they have to make full application, 'cause that's the problem, the problem is they don't have a site plan at this point, that's the bigger issue.
They need a site plan to put a fence up.
Well, they need a site plan for the business, I guess.
Technically, yes.
Yeah, because it's gonna include the display areas, it basically, it's what's defining the property, you know, and it gives, basically, down the road is, you know, if, you know, he might abide by it, but then, let's say, down the road, he sells it to somebody else, they decide to do something different, there's something in place to, to kinda keep everything in conformity, um, that's all, I mean, the, the fence is one thing, I mean, it's just a, but Barbara has, you know, she's, I guess she's written you up, I guess, right?
Yeah, for, for having this stuff on the side of the building, storage.
So, I mean, it's, yeah, she's got some violations on the property, this, you know, getting a site plan approval is the remedy, you know, to getting, you know, those, those violations removed at this point, so.
And the other issue too is, I, I think that, you know, you wanna come up with a plan as that to deal with, um, and if, I mean, if you, I don't necessarily think there's gonna be that, that many issues on the right side, but, you know, if you, if, if there's any kinda bump in the road, and you can do the left first and then do the right, you can certainly, at that point, have it as a phase for more tools, so it's not, I, I, you know, come up with a plan for the whole.
Yeah.
Take one or two, what's the priority?
Yeah, we still have, I mean, you know, we still have to make a, a full submittal, we're still gonna have to.
So long as you're here addressing the issue.
Yeah, it, it puts a, yeah, it keeps everything, you know, there's a stay on anything she has on, you know, against the property right now, as long as you, as long as you keep the process going. If the process stops, you know, we don't get the full submittal, you know, then everything goes back to the way it was, and whatever actions she's taken, um, you know, we'll follow through.
Yeah, I think at the end of it too, he's, he's been operating at a lot next door anyway, which.
Right.
There's just my handshake, or, you know.
Yeah.
This protects him too, 'cause that locked in.
Yeah.
And the owner, and the owner is.
And the owner of the property too.
Basically a bunch of housekeeping.
Yeah.
Hmm?
Housekeeping.
Yeah, 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 but, I mean, I know, like I said, when we talked in the past, I, I don't think anybody had a problem with what you were doing there, it's just a matter of just getting the plan put together, showing it on paper, um, so that we can get to a point where we can approve it, you know, and at that point, once you've, you know, put everything into place that's on the plan, uh, you know, everything, you're, you're okay to operate at that point without any issues, okay?
I guess the one issue though, as far as I'm looking at the plan, I don't know if this is an issue, as far as the, you know, I'm very familiar with the spot, you have a lot of cars, I think, coming from, definitely, so it looks like you're a very successful mechanic, um, but what, my only question would be from the fire point of view, as far as if we're gonna fence that all in, and some, you know, number of cars, if you wanna have a discussion about that.
Yeah, I mean, that's, I mean, as long as.
I think we'd have gates big enough to get like, big wreckers in it now, so.
As long as you can get a, as long as you're gonna be able to get a fire truck in and around the building, you know, not a hundred percent around it, but, you know, at least the access around to the back of it.
Yeah. Yeah, that's.
It's not, you know, it's not a, it's not a huge building, you know, and once this, once you do make a full submittal to the, to the planning board, this also gets circulated to the Fire Prevention Bureau, and there's representatives from all the fire departments within the town on that board, they'll, they'll make comments, you know, and obviously, you know, access is one of the things they're going to look at.
Are there shipping containers behind the building right now?
Yes.
What, shipping containers are behind there? Okay.
I see two.
Yeah, yeah, so that would see, those should be shown on the, on the site plan as well.
Are they shipping containers, or are they trailers, on wheels?
Shipping containers.
The accessories, yeah.
Well, they're movable, they pick them right up and move.
No, just, because I know like Mavis Tire, you know, some of the tire places will have trailers tied for tires.
No, shipping, shipping.
Yeah, they're on the ground.
Yeah, as a, right, so it's more of a registered vehicle as opposed to a, a structure on the property, but either way, they should be shown on the plan, just to.
Well, it, it goes back to that, the issue of enforcement, right? We need to know, we need a site plan, we need to know where everything is, and.
Yeah, it's two today, two today and then three tomorrow, and it could be a problem.
Exactly, well, I mean, I think, I, I mean, that's the.
Or if they get moved and then they infringe on the circulation around the building, or, I mean.
Right, no, 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 great, that's why, you know, I said it has to be shown on the property. But I don't think it's a showstopper that they're there, it's just a, right.
But yeah, storage areas, and, and then, these accessories, right?
Separation between the building and shipping.
Buildings in the containers, probably, there's probably, if you're considering a structure, it's probably like, yeah, it's probably.
You want to show call out though.
Like 30 feet, maybe.
Right.
Those containers are away from the building?
Like 10 foot, somewhere 12 foot, somewhere around there.
Yeah. Yeah, comes a, there's a couple of things you might want to look at before making a submittal, just regarding building code, with a, with a structure next to the other one, there's certain distances, setbacks, depending on type of construction, I'm just thinking it might be, you might need a minimum of 20 feet in between those, but it might be something, you know, that Mike can take a look at, yeah, just to make sure.
Okay. Appreciate your time.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, so we're to the end of the agenda this evening, is there anything else we need to talk about?
Negative.
I have a couple of questions that are legal pertaining to Downey Oil.
Pertaining to?
Downey Oil can be inserted, would that have to do with?
Oh, with that?
Does everybody get served?
Yeah, tonight, tonight, tonight at my house.
Who's playing that?
I didn't.
No, it's coming, it's coming.
How about we, for all of us, hold on, hold on, hold on.
21, 21 Burgers was.
Yeah, we got, let's mention 21 Burgers, and then we'll talk, we'll, we'll consult legal counsel. All right, so yes, 21 Burgers, obviously the board's been emailing pictures of the north elevation of the building, the current tenant in the building would like to put in a glass roll-up door on that one side to kind of open up the dining area to the outside. Is, does the board feel that there's a need that they need to come in for an architectural approval?
No, not a raw project.
For the project?
No way.
Okay, all right, so we just want to show that on the record then this evening. With that said, do we need to make motion to go executive session with legal counsel?
I would say yes.
Okay, so make motion.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, seconded by?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries, so we're going to go on executive session to discuss a legal matter with counsel.